Study session. Do we have any public comments?
We do. We have Larry Barber.
Larry, you want to come on up, please? State your name and address for the record.
Richmond, Kansas. I'm the president of the Over the Road Gang Car Club.
Good afternoon, Larry.
We wanted to present the city of Ottawa with a plan for the car show. And we want to thank the city of Ottawa. All of your guys, city, the police department, the fire department. City Works, Parks, everybody had a fantastic job for the car show. That thing went smooth.
Any numbers?
Fourteen fifty-two is what we had, which was down a little bit from last year, but it worked out really good for us. Worked out good for the police department. So the weather helped us a little bit too. It kind of. Made the cruise night go really smooth with a little bit of the rain kind of helped a little bit. We had a really good turnout. Was pleased with it. I just wanted to drop by and say thank you. We appreciate it. We're working on next year's car show. Already.
Already.
It's only been a week.
We're taking so much time off.
Well, and we put this car show together this year with twelve volunteers and that was it from the car club. Twelve of us put this car show on. So if anyone wants to volunteer.
Say it right into the camera.
Yeah, we're looking to volunteer. Yeah, exactly. But we appreciate, I mean, the park was. Fabulous down there. Even after when the storm go through, Parks Department, it's great. Everything looked great, so.
We certainly appreciate what the over the road gang does every year for the city of Ottawa. It amazes me. I mean, twelve people, golly.
Yeah, twelve, that's, that's twelve of us from the car club. Then, of course, we have volunteers from the FFA and. Ottawa University, which stepped up a lot this year to help us.
Somebody wants to volunteer, how do they contact you?
Our meetings are the first Thursday at the Gopert Center at seven o'clock. Or they can email us, Over the Road Gang.
Over the Road Gang.
At gmail dot com.
Okay.
Yep. Yep, or they can, they can get ahold of me. My number is listed on the Over the Road Gang website. Just got my cell phone number and all that on the email. Anybody's more welcome to reach out to us. City managers and city commissioners want to volunteer, we'll take whatever we can.
It was impressive as my first experience.
Yeah.
And I actually thought the turnout was good, given the extended forecast going into the event. And the, the rain and the participants persevered.
Yes.
Even as it rolled through with carnage going on to the left of us and to the right of us and above us and below us.
Exactly.
Staging there from here, so.
And that's why I said it, the police department, their JW Hawkins, those guys all up in the command center, I mean, they was on the radio with me nonstop. Tom Winters, is that his name?
Tom Winters.
Tom Winters. There were constant communication with us. It worked out fabulous for us. So we appreciate everything you guys do for us.
Well, and now that I've had one behind me from the city side, I look forward to bringing my father next year who grew up. Cruising with those classic cars, so I hope to share the experience with him next year.
Yep, bring him down.
We'll be bringing in some out of town tax revenue.
Yeah, there we go. And you know, that, you know, that's one thing that we, we get a lot of bad feedback from the car show. And a lot of people don't realize that it's all volunteers. We don't get paid to do, to do these car shows. And it's, it's a lot of hours for this car show to put on. And you know, a lot of the people here in Franklin County, you know, they bash you on the websites and it's like, you know, hey, you know, volunteer. If you want to make a change, come and you volunteer, you help support us.
From our perspective. As new members of the community, we didn't certainly see that or since then. So I think, I think you and your group.
It's on a lot of the social media, but. It doesn't affect us.
Well, there's a reason why.
Never see that at the city, so just in case you're wondering, it's just always roses here. The city, they love everything we do. We never see them volunteering there.
Yeah.
And there's a reason why they call it the book of many faces.
That's right. That's right.
So you just keep doing the good work that you're doing.
We will. Like I said, I appreciate your time. Thank you guys very much again. Thanks for the fire department, police department. Thank you, Adam.
All right, I believe the next one is Mr. And Mrs. Snyder.
Yes.
You both coming up?
Kirby Snyder. Want my address?
Just the business is.
Business address is eight forty-six South Main, Blue Sky Liquor, Ottawa, Kansas. I am Kirby Snyder. That's my wife, Angie. And we put forth a request to expand Sunday sales to start at nine AM. It's been not that many years ago that we asked for Sunday sales in general. And it's, right now it's noon to eight, even though, you know, the, the three stores we close, we are open from noon to six. So we could be open later. We choose not to be. During the week, the hours are nine AM to eleven PM. You know, Monday through Thursday, we close at nine, Friday and Saturday, ten. So there are some hours that we could be open, but. We, I talked with the other two stores. We would like to be able to open earlier than that on Sunday. My preference would be eleven, but I just shouldn't go ahead and just match the hours that the other communities have in the, in the state. It's driven by, well, customer requests mainly, employees. The football rush is, is, is part of it. Noon games are a struggle for us because everybody's there. We sure would like for you to be able to get your snacks and your drinks. And even if you wanted to tailgate. You know, whatever, so that's it. We just pretty pleased like to be able to open. Like other communities in the state. If you have to answer any questions or.
I wonder if our city attorney can address how that, how that process would go for us to make that change.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, if the. City were to decide to, to entertain the request, I would draft an ordinance for you. We would amend. The municipal code, as you know, the legislature allows and sets the maximum hours of operation, as Mr. Snyder said. Certainly liquor stores choose to be open less than that. But the maximum hours that they can be open are set by state law and then the local jurisdictions have the authority to. Make even more restrictions. You can be more restrictive, but you can't be more permissive than state law in this case, so. You would be able to just do this with an ordinance change. And if you wanted to move it forward, the, the step would be to ask me to draft an ordinance for you. For your consideration.
And I'm assuming that nine AM request is within the parameters of the max?
Nine AM is the state statute and that's the, that's the hours that the state allows. And that was changed a couple of years ago. You recall, the city went to Sunday sales and started to allow Sunday sales beginning at noon, which is the current state affairs. And that, that was done by several ordinance changes.
And just because we change ordinance doesn't mean that they're required to be open at that time, correct? I mean, they just have, it's just, it's just not prohibiting.
Yeah, you'll recall that at, at the time that you went to Sunday sales, somebody else was against that because they were like, no, we'll have to be open. One store is open, we'll have to be open too. And, and I think over time, everybody kind of figured out they. They have their niches, they have their customer bases and, and, and just because one store is open at eight PM doesn't mean all the stores have to be open at eight PM. So I think now, if Mr. Snyder is representing this to you and, and he's usually fairly accurate in what he says, if all the stores are in agreement, they would like that. They don't have, they don't have to be open. They could open at eleven, they could open at ten, they could open at nine thirty. You're just setting the maximum out that they could be open.
And I did reach out to the other two stores and encouraged them to come talk to you if they felt strongly. All I got was a sounds good, Kirby, from Matt and. I'd open at eleven from, from Tyler, so. I don't know if they said anything to you, you folks or not, but. I took that as a yes, you know, we have a pretty good working relationship on hours and that kind of stuff, so. That's all. Thank you.
Well, no, we just talked to the over the road gang about generating revenue and that's certainly, you know, ta- taking some tax dollars now being open at nine and. Heading towards that direction when you go to the stadium. So I'd, I'd be interested in certainly having the, uh, our legal counsel draft up an ordinance and us, for us to review.
Yeah, I too would be in favor of, of having a review of it. The thing is, is that much with like any other change that we make in the city, I mean, citizens. Are, should contact us if they have questions or concerns, but I don't want to get in the way of commerce. That is part of, like helps keep our city growing is commerce. And so I would be in favor of that too. But also, and I, I can't imagine that anyone around the table is not for this. I want citizens to reach out to us and tell us how they feel one way or the other about it.
For sure.
I agree. And I think obviously we're more restrictive than the state, which is a pretty easy threshold. So we're not going into uncharted waters for sure.
I think we'd be interested in seeing something, Mr. Finch. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. And Mrs. Snyder. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that moves us on to items to be placed on the regular city commission agenda, which is the minutes from the September eighteenth study session and the September twentieth regular meeting. Along with the proclamation recognizing October twenty twenty-three as domestic violence awareness month. Commissioners, have you got a chance to review those? And if so, are you okay with moving those on to our next meeting?
Yep.
We will do so. Thank you. All right, item two is, uh, items for presentation and discussion, which is receive and file a capital projects update. Director Landis is just gonna, she couldn't show us the display on, on the screen, so she's gonna run up to the office real quick and. So we can see that.
We thought we would give the commission an update on the. Process that we're utilizing to aggregate all of our projects into. Uh, one aggregated center point. For administration as well as for ease of future reporting. It's one of the steps that we are taking in an effort to have a strategically aligned. Operation, making sure that communication, which is the foundation of that process, is reflecting the. Real-time cost revenues and expenditures for. All of our operations, but specifically in this case for our capital operations. And this would be for items that are contained not only in the adopted capital improvement budget or program. But in the operating budget as well as we have numerous capital projects. Sprinkled across operating funds. So what, what you have here, I don't know if you can really see it clearly, but. We've got an active project list and then our capital improvement program. And then individual folders. And then we'll start, why don't we start before we get into that kind of, well, go ahead and, and begin, Melanie, with the, uh. The active projects. So what you see here are a list of all of the adopted projects. Ranging from the airport down to our.
No, I know, but like on her own screen, can she at the bottom enlarge the screen?
To be honest, I don't know how to do that. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
There's not a size, I'm.
I just, why don't you go ahead and open and then we can see if we can expand the. So what this shows is the document structure for a, a given product. Or project, I mean, which. Is where we aggregate the contracts, compliance items. Everything from minutes that were. You, yeah, meetings where projects were approved to process payments. You know, ongoing budget. It, it's essentially a, a tree or a, an outline for. Uniform document storage and where they're at and why for each individual project. And then obviously. These can be short cutted to individual. Departments, individual member drives, so they can access it. Now, we have. Certain spreadsheets locked down, so only certain people can actually get in and make changes where. You know, that may not be necessarily. You know, we don't want mistakes being made unintentionally in messing things up, especially when we have macros involved. And Melanie, feel free to. Comment as, as you feel necessary, but this is a, a master project summary sheet that shows what the project is. What has actually occurred within the last thirty days, what we anticipate going forward for the next month. What's the status of the project? Is it, you know, in progress? Is it planning? Is it, is it? And, you know, waiting. And then the budget amount, the percent of the budget expended and when the anticipated completion date is. To be achieved. And then this is an individual project sheet. And in this case, it's for our law enforcement. Center, which is the exterior envelope and master stabilization, essentially the new roof. And we had bids come in today with a bid opening at two PM. So we hope to be providing an update on that soon. It shows the funding source. Aggregated or a summarized. Project budget, which includes obviously the contingencies and a breakdown of. How we got to those planning and construction estimates. As well as what's been accomplished. You can see those there. So it states that the bids are due on the twenty-fifth and. This is as of August thirty-first. So as we move forward, obviously, chief, we'll have that updated. Because the departments are the ones who are actually managing the input for these sheets and it's just reviewed by. Myself and, and Melanie and the finance department.
So since we're looking at this and you talked about the, the bid opening earlier, that number was. Was there other stuff involved with that or just mostly real for that?
Roof and, and there was a, an alternate bid and I haven't received official notification from the. City engineer yet, but I'll, I'll defer to chief on that.
What's the question?
I guess my, he just asked about the bid.
Well, what I guess what I'm getting at is, is, is that the number we, I get the, the engineers expected amount at that number?
That was the original engineers asking to base on the overall project.
So we came in, the bids came in considerably lower, correct?
So far, they have.
Yeah, which is good. That's what, kind of what I was getting.
Sorry.
No worries.
And so the hope is, is that as we streamline our reporting process to you monthly. For an update on this, you'll, you'll be able to receive a PDF copy of not only. Where we're at, but eventually as we evolve to not only the written reports in PDF format, but PowerPoints. You know, we'll be able to essentially copy and paste the updates into those slides, making it. Easy and. Efficient to keep those updated and current and reported to the commission each month at the second regular commission meeting. But what we see here is, is the municipal auditorium update where we are in progress right now. And as of August thirty-first, that was forty-eight point three percent expended and we anticipate. That wrapping up, concluding very shortly. You see the city hall security improvements. With a two hundred and thirty thousand dollar budget and where we're at now. Which is nine point six five percent or essentially the cost of the design. We may see a slight increase in that as. Paul is our project manager for that. Improvements, working with the architect so that we can finalize a, a lower. Construction costs so that we're coming in within budget as we're looking to, uh, to value engineer those improvements to budget by partnering with. The little bitter Lloyd on that. And then our fire department comprehensive study, which is in progress. And we hope to have wrapped up later this fall. Our compensation study is also in prog- progress and should be wrapped up within the next month or so. And then there's the OMA project that again should be. Concluded here within the next thirty to sixty days, we would expect. Now, all of this is as of again, August thirty-first. And they'll be updated at the end of this month as well. Uh, we still have the, uh, street rehabilitation, which was at the twelve hundred block of South Maple. And where we're at with that, we have our taxiway reconstruction project. Which is just, just kicking off. So, and we have a budget of a hundred and ninety-six thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars on that. Our splash pad, we're looking to see significant movement here in the next. Coming months as we strive to get that open by late spring of twenty twenty-four. We have our approved project for Mulberry and Dundee that came in high and will rebid. There's our fitness park, which is concluded, our Princeton project, which should be wrapped up. Our proximity park water tower, which is currently in progress and. That experience right now is only the, uh, design portion and we have demobilization. Underway currently and on site and we'll circulate. Photos of that as well. And we'll show as we get into some of these where we can copy in. Not only the project updates with photographs, but also a moving milestone chart, a Gantt chart. I'm sure that we can keep that. Schedule in a visual format as well. We have our water plant. Generator, which is in progress and on site and that's about eighty-four percent. We got the gas line base grant. Our electric meter and water meter replacements, which. Uh, we provided an update on as far as having been received. And then, of course, uh, our ongoing UV and water treatment plant studies, which are, are currently. In the early phases of. In process. So we'll have, uh, the department heads. Answer any questions that you might have on specifics of any of these projects. Melanie, did you have any? Other items that you would like to highlight with respect to. Our process here?
You know, not necessarily on the specific projects, but I have to tell you that. Putting this together has been a really great exercise for our city staff. Not just your department heads, but those staff that are working directly with the projects. And they're getting to see the whole process. And when you have to pull together the parts and pieces to put together a report like this, but then also. To make sure that we have a complete project file. It's enlightening, I think. It's, I don't know if that's the right word, but I think that there's some realization as to. Oh, there are so many more steps than just the one small piece that I do for this one project. And so. Anyway, this has been a really great exercise. This was Brian's vision and everybody has really jumped in to pull together the parts and pieces. So I appreciate where this is headed and I'm excited to get it fully built out.
And, and it's, it's an evolution. It's a work in progress, so we're. But we're excited with where it's at and where it's going.
Yeah, it's a great idea. I think sometimes people in town ask us, hey, what's going on over here? Well, that will be more informed on a monthly basis. What's going on? We can answer the question right away without getting back with you and getting back to the department head and just more efficient way of keeping information flowing. I like it. Yeah. I agree. You'd mentioned Gantt charts and stuff. Do we have Microsoft project?
No.
Okay, our city licensing doesn't promise. Paul, do you know? Are we on trim?
No.
And no Power BI? I'm just thinking about this. Converting this to essentially a dashboard. For ingestion by people, because like you said, I get asked so many times on the water. On each of these products, not each one, but several of these, someone's like, where are we? And if we could like direct them to the website, and this is the master source that we're to feed something, like you said, evolving. Just having that idea would be something great that we could say, here's the link on the homepage. You can see where all these projects are. For us as well as them, I think would be a great thing going forward, but I think this is fantastic.
And we're trying to take a crawl walk approach because we are truly building it from. The, the ground up and, and working with our. Not just, as Melanie said, the department heads, but those, those supervisors who are the folks that are actually. Uh, get credit for getting the day-to-day work done and are out there actually with these projects. And then. You know, the department heads and those of us here at city hall are, are helping move it along and assisting where we can, but. We share the load on this across the board. And on the individual department sheets, you'll see some of our superintendents are the, uh, project managers for. This, or it may be our, um, our deputy fire chief for fire study here. So we're, we're trying to also. Train and, and teach, if you will, and coach the next. Level of leaders and future leaders for our organization as they're coming up. So this will be old hat to them. When we all move on to the next phase or chapter in our lives and they're here to fill that role. Well, if, if there are no questions, you'll be seeing more of this and in different formats. Including, you know, photo progress and. We look forward to. Presenting this at our next meeting in October, or the second meeting in October.
Thank you. Lots of valuable information. Appreciate it. Comments, car city manager?
Not at this time, well. We will continue to evolve our process and everything is focused on communicating and serving. Our citizens and our commission as we're all rolling in the same direction.
Maybe I confused you. Comments, is that, is that your comments?
Those are my.
Okay, just making sure.
You didn't say.
Comments by city commissioners, Commissioner Kayler.
Not at this time.
Commissioner Clayton.
Not at this time.
Air Pro Tim Skidmore.
I just wanted to bring up, I know I talked to Paul about this. I guess our north industrial parks having some electrical issues with some inconsistencies and surges. Is that what? Paul, you maybe addressed that better than I can, but. Okay, so I don't know if we need to spend more money or do something up there to make that more consistent, whatever it is. I just want to make sure. They know we've heard you and, and we're working on it, so it's important.
Yes, we've met with all of the businesses up there that are experiencing this. And in fact, our electrical leadership team and myself had some conferences with. Some headquarters of a couple of the, of a business. And we've got a plan of action and we are having a follow-up. Tomorrow afternoon and I am also following up with the businesses that are in that area. With an outline on our course of action and tentative timeframe as we proceed with addressing the issue.
Thank you very much. And also congratulations to KU football team. They are ranked twenty-fourth in the nation. I've only got two friends that are KU fans, that's my wife and Commissioner Kayler, so congratulations to you two.
You can all reach out to Mr. Skidmore at his email for the city. And pledge your allegiance if you must.
Yes, yeah. And that's all I have.
I have no comments, just a few announcements. October second, we have our study session here at city hall at four PM and then October fourth is our regu- next regular meeting at seven PM. Also here at city hall. I will make a motion, a motion that, uh, the commission recess into executive session for a period of thirty minutes. For the purpose of attorney-client consultation, the justification is. For the purpose of attorney-client consultation, the justification for closed session is. Uh, personnel matters for non-elected personnel, uh, it'll be the city commission with our uh, legal counsel. And uh, no action, no, not yet. No action will be taken and I'll give you a few minutes to leave, we will resume back in here at the room, five oh five. For a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. Thank you.